Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Bettendorf Committee of the Whole Meeting. Today is Monday, September 19th, 2022. It's 5:00 PM. Thank you all for joining us. We begin tonight's meeting with three consent agenda items. Let's take consent agendas B as in buoy and C as in cat together, please. For that, we welcome our city administrator, Decker Plain, our city attorney, Chris Curran, and our director of culture and recreation, Kim Kidwell. Thank you all for being here. Appreciate it. Go right ahead. You have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Brad Martel is also here from the YMCA sitting right behind you. And I said hi to Brad, but I probably should have introduced him. I'm sorry to steal your thunder, Decker. Would you tell us who's sitting behind you, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. Brad is sitting behind me. So we have the shared use agreement that we have worked on, and I would emphasize that we still have draft on it. We believe we're pretty close to the finish, but the whole point of being draft is that there might be changes that you might tell us based on your observations either over the weekend or in the next two weeks before we have the public hearing that we could insert into the agreement. I think I would like to say that Brad and Kim and I have provided input to Chris, who's been the workhorse on this, and he's done an outstanding job of getting these two agreements together based on all the input we've given him so far. So I think what we'll do is have Chris kind of be the play-by-play guy and take us through the salient points of the design, the construction, the operation, the upkeep, which I think are the general categories. And then I'll insert probably most on the funding side, but he'll take us through the agreement, and if there are questions, we'll try to answer those. And obviously, we will take questions over the next couple of weeks. And then our action for tonight or for tomorrow would be to ask you to put these up for setting the date for the public hearing on these two items. And that would be at our meeting October 4th, 5th or 4th?
Fourth.
3rd, 4th?
October 4th.
The next council cycle for consideration. And then I think we would then, if the council were to direct us that way, we would have these two resolutions on the next meeting with public hearings attached to both, and we would have a companion public hearing or companion agreement to hire the architectural firm to do the actual design work. So there'd be three actions at our next meeting if you so take us there. So with that, unless Kim has any comments, I would let Chris kind of take us, and then I'll jump in or Kim will jump in. And Brad is here in case there might be questions that he needs to answer. So.
Thank you, Decker. And as Decker said, please, as we go through here, my intent is to just sort of walk through the agreement in order, if there are questions along the way, feel free to jump in or at the end, obviously, whatever is best for you. As Decker said, there will be two public hearings set, one for the proposed sale of the fitness center, the other with respect to the shared use agreement, which contemplates a lease of property. So both of those items are disposition of real estate, and a public hearing will be set. I'd like to start, if it's okay with all of you, with the shared use agreement, which is the more complicated agreement of the two. This is an agreement that contemplates a number of actions. In broad strokes, the design of an aquatic facility, the funding of the construction and design work, the ultimate construction of it and the construction budgets that are associated with that, the operation of the facility once it's completed, as well as the capital expenditures and replacement issues along the way, and ultimately, some of the standard issues such as liability, insurance, indemnity, termination clause in the boilerplate. But we'll, so we'll kind of go through these in order, and again, stop me if you have questions. Starting with the beginning of the shared use agreement, obviously, there are some recitals setting forth sort of the lay of the land as we come together for this proposed agreement. And then the first substantive section is really a definition of the aquatic facilities. And Kim might have a slide that, this is something that you've seen in past presentations, but it's a new aquatic facility with a shared building in between the pool and a proposed future ice rink. As I mentioned, this agreement contemplates a lease of property to the YMCA of the aquatic facilities, as well as the shared use or the shared building. But the ice is not part of this agreement, so that needs to be clear. Also, there's a parking lot that's part of the defined term of aquatic facilities that would be a public parking lot and would be used for both the ice as well as the pool. So that's kind of the beginning of it, is just sort of setting forth what this agreement relates to, and it's this new aquatic facility. The next part of the agreement, just kind of going down, just sets forth the term. It's a 20-year term with the Y. At the end of that 20-year term, there's not an automatic renewal, but 18 months preceding the expiration of the term, the parties would come together and discuss the possible extension of the agreement, but it is not auto-renewable with how we have it drafted here.
By either party.
By either party. We would have to come together. It's a straight 20-year term, and we'll get to the termination section at the end, but there is no termination for convenience clause either, and so we will get to that later in the agreement. The next section, as you'll see, is the funding provision, and this, Decker can jump in here, but the way we have it set up is it's really, both parties are, the city has a contribution cap of $6 million, and the Y, as we discussed, and as you know, there's another part of this overall coming together of these two parties, and that it contemplates the sale of the fitness center. So the number that you see in 3A is $6 million less the purchase price of the Life Fitness Center for a total of $6 million to be used for the construction of the aquatic facility. There's also a number of private entities that have indicated support for the facility, and maybe, Decker, if you could jump in.
You bet. So we have two major grants secured, one for $4 million from the Scott County Regional Authority, and we are making application by their September 30th date to make the application as instructed, and another million dollars from the RDA, and again, making application for the September 30th. But both their boards have met and approved those amounts. The RDA will be over a five-year period, and the SEAR will be over a 12-year period. And we have now, we've had three conversations with three other foundations, and I would tell you that they're very positive, in my opinion, and I believe we will be getting all three of those secured. We've asked for $2 million, $1 million from each entity and a quarter million from the third entity, which is the maximum that they would allow. We're not at liberty to say who those are yet, no, like I wasn't at liberty to give permission from the RDA and SEAR until now, but those two are secured. Their boards have met, their boards have approved it. We just have to apply for it. We would likely see the funding in the spring, but we will apply pursuant to September 30th guidelines, which are their normal applications. Then, as Chris indicated, what we've done is gone back and looked at the concept that RDG has submitted, and we have pared back so that we give a maximum contribution by the city, a maximum contribution by the Y of $6 million apiece, and then we have the private funding to come in. You saw that the one cost estimate was at 18.7. What we've done is reduce back to 18 million right today, and then the language, I think that's in C, indicates that in the event we go over that, we either have to seek additional grant funding or the grant funding that I just described would kick in, or we agree that we have to come back and then split that cost between us. We believe, because we've not valued engineered this at all, all we have are concepts, is that there'll be, there's a lot of fluff in there to value engineer this down if necessary and/or stage it to make these numbers work and/or, like I said, the opportunity for additional funding, and we know that Brad has a grant pending independent of the three that I talked to you about. So we believe very strongly this gets us to where we need to be when we talked about a third, a third, a third. This concept of $6 million, $6 million, and $6 million, we believe will be in place by the time we get to bid. So when you, if you set the public hearings and if you were to take action at the next meeting, that third action I talked about would be to hire RDG to design and prepare the bid documents. We would likely then go to that design over the winter and put it out to bid likely in early January or February so that we could assess those numbers, and by then we'll know where we sit relative to what the actual bid is and whatever value engineering we can place into it, or if we have to seek additional funding to make the math work. And then we would likely bid this project in March, maybe a little earlier if that's possible, so that we can have a spring construction start, and that's the plan for the funding. So I hope that makes sense. Jerry, for me?
You want to do questions on funding now and then?
Yep.
That's fine, Jerry.
That's fine, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Decker. So I have three questions. One is, the numbers you gave us so far from RDG show another 1.3 for design in AE firms. So if you're using the number of 18 million, we've really cut it back to 2 million then, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then if it goes over that, anything over the 18 million, my understanding based upon this document, the Y and the city would split it equally.
Or?
Or you get additional grants from somebody else.
That's right. So we would have to, or we value engineer and cut something out.
Cut something out, okay.
That would bring that cost back. So I think, to your point, our first thought would be we would value engineer it, and we think you've seen some of those documents. I think the demolition was like 1.3 million for the existing pool or over a million. And Brad told us that he was able to demolish the Y building downtown for 130,000. We've seen some costs in there that we think are pretty high, that just don't make sense to us today. But so yes, value engineering, number one, additional funding from other sources, number two, and then ultimately, then we'd have to come together and split whatever difference is if we can't reduce those costs or find additional money.
And then my next question is, you said some of the money is going to take 12 years to get it?
Yes.
So I assume we're going to have to bond then, and there's going to be interest cost. Who picks up that interest cost?
Well, yes, yes, there will be likely some sort of financing, whether it's bonds or whether it's bank financing. Jason's exploring what those options are based on what cash we have, but those costs would be absorbed in the project. So similar, they're either going to have to be found in additional revenue source, be part of the cost-cutting scheme, or we'll have to share those costs.
Why wouldn't we just use reserves?
We could, but I don't know that we have total reserves to cover everything everywhere. I would defer to my finance colleague, who's much more learned and knowledgeable than I am in these matters.
And then my last question is, excuse me.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Regarding the use of reserves, this would require a drawdown of about $5 million, which I think we certainly have the reserves to do that. I would be hesitant to do it for this single purpose and kind of leave the cupboard bare, if you will. So we've explored some financing options. I have Baker Tilly and Bond Council working out on some things as we speak, likely going to be something called stamped warrants, which we would have placed through a bank. Cannot be geo-bonds because these don't qualify. As you know, this would be a general corporate purpose type of project, so we can't go the geo-bond route, but that's the avenue that we're exploring right now.
And then my last question is, there are some people out there in the public that thinks we're selling the fitness center too low at 1.4 million. The Y building is the same size, and it's currently valued at 7.3 million. I understand the fact that Y wants to contribute $6 million, and that's the purchase price and then anything above that, to get up to the $6 million. Have we considered getting another appraisal of the fitness center to a higher number or a different number? And then, say it's 2 million, then the Y would pay 2 million for the building and give us 4 million toward the construction.
I don't know what that accomplishes because...
It accomplishes, it accomplishes a perception by the public that we're getting our value.
Well, I think there are people who also believe that the value of the building is way too high, and so, you know, the issue here is, no matter which way you slice it, if you were to sell it to somebody else for 2 million, would they give you 4 million to apply to a pool project? And the answer is simply no, because you're really talking about getting a full $6 million. So we kind of saw that as an exercise in futility. We use the assessed value as a market value because we thought that was fair, and, but as you notice in the agreement, we contribute those funds to the project so that the, this concept that we put forth, a third, a third, a third, would remain intact, and that's how we looked at it. But we've not thought about having a different appraisal. We just saw that it didn't have any value to us as we perceived it.
And from my perspective, an appraisal is not required legally. There's nothing in the Iowa code that would require that. The question is, is it fair market value? I think an assessed value is a measure of fair market value. I'm comfortable, from a legal standpoint, that this is perfectly fine.
I'm just bringing it up because I think there's some people in the community that the perception is it's too low, and if we had another appraisal, and since it doesn't change the number that the Y is presenting, given us, why, I just suggest we consider it.
And that's exactly the point that I'm trying to make is, okay, we pay somebody to give us an appraisal, we're still going to take the money and apply it to the project, so all we're doing is having a cost of an appraisal. It is what it is, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you take two buildings in town that are the same size and say they're worth the same amount of money, you're not doing an effective appraisal either. I mean, you can have a 4,000-square-foot house sitting next to a 4,000-square-foot house, and they can be dramatically different.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, one could be in terrible shape, and the other one could be in immaculate shape, and it could be hundreds of thousands of dollars difference, so that's a complete difference. When was a Y built?
The Y would be built probably 25, 30 years newer than the, oh, I'd say in the 2000s, Brad.
Yeah.
15 years old.
When was the fitness center built? One's a brick building, one's a certified pole barn. It's a lot of difference.
That's more than we purchased it for, and I think it's the most we've ever been offered for it, in my opinion.
Any other questions on the financing before we turn it back over to Chris to go through some legal provisions?
I'm good, Chris, unless you think there's something else I missed there.
That covers it. Thank you, Decker. As Decker alluded to, the next section really gets into the planning, as I think Decker really covered the RDG and the planning of the facility. Well, Section 5 deals with the actual construction and the fact that there will be a formally-approved construction budget. If that budget needs to be amended, we will come back to the council to do so. The construction budget, as Jerry alluded to, does include soft costs such as architectural fees and engineering fees, and this will be a document that will be based upon the work that RDG does, and so that will be an integral part of the agreement. Really, the next big part of this agreement relates to the operation of the facilities, and as we mentioned at the outset, the Y would be responsible for the operation and the maintenance of the facilities, using their expertise in this area, and it's another example of two entities coming together to do things jointly and to really put the party with the expertise or particular expertise in control. So here, one issue that has come up a number of times is the daily fee issue. So as you'll see in 7B, the facilities would be operated by the Y, and they would be, the facility would be open to Y members and the public on equal terms. There are no special privileges afforded to YMCA members. The daily fee rate would be commensurate with other publicly-available aquatic facilities in the Quad Cities, and so it's, it's a, open to the public. I know there have been questions there, so I don't know if there are any particular issues on that point, but...
What's commensurate mean?
Just like... Reasonably commensurate. It doesn't need to be exact. I mean, it could be a better, if it's a, you know, it could be a more robust facility, but it's reasonably commensurate, and I think it's going to be very close to what they are today.
I mean, can it change?
The market will change, I think. Yeah, that will, that will change, just like any facility.
It's kind of a legal term, so I always worry about legal terms as to what that...
I think it's always dangerous to put a particular number on it.
Yes.
And so I think it needs to be able to flex with the public or with the market, with demand, with costs to run a facility.
But we don't have any input on it necessarily.
No, the Y is in charge of the operation of the facility.
Under the scheduling paragraph, we say from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Is that five days a week or seven days a week?
And that is in brackets, just because I really, this is one thing that we haven't had an opportunity to really get the input from Brad and his team on that. Those are, it's in brackets, that's the current times that the splash landing is open. I think, Kim, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that particular issue?
Yeah, I mean, typically, splash is open to the general public during those times. With the addition of the evening swim, that leaves it open for programming in the morning, such as lap swim, swim lessons, and I think, speaking with Brad and Josh, his COO, they plan to run a similar sort of operational kind of timeline. So those times might not be exact, but I think they plan on offering the lap swim, swim lessons, and then they usually primarily reserve morning times for groups, field trips, things like that, so that the general swim time is not so disruptive with large groups. So that might not be exact, but it's a generality of how it will operate.
Is that seven days a week or five? Well, we currently use seven, right?
But we don't do necessarily camps or, we do those five days a week, so, but there are lessons that sometimes have weekend activities. I think it's similar to what we do, and they're going to do, that's what they do for a living, so, and they've agreed that we can bring our summer camp kids in when they're having their camp kids. So as you know, we run playground programs and totlot programs in Camp Lagoon. We would coordinate and utilize that schedule like they do, so we look forward to that. I think that's, you know, this is going to be, I think the beauty of what the Y brings to us is a whole cadre of people who are Y members that are members from all over the community, including the broader Iowa Quad Cities, and it will, I think, give us a lot more diversity, and I think it's going to, this is going to be twice the size of what we have today. It's going to be a great regional opportunity for us, for both of us, and we're excited about it.
So Scott was talking about the daily fee. In order to participate in swim classes or lap swim or those other programs, would it be a requirement that they be Y members?
No, they could pay a daily fee.
They could pay a daily fee, okay.
But if they're a Y member, it's going to be a great offering for them.
Yep.
And I believe their programs, and Brad, correct me if I'm wrong, also have a Y member rate and then a non-member rate to participate. Is that correct?
That's correct. Guys, we want to be open. An $18 million facility, we want it to be open.
Yeah.
Even water walking and ride for seniors and everything, we want the place to be used, so the hours won't be a concern.
Okay, let's change that to 11:00 PM.
Take your price up.
Deckard's got to be before 11:00. I'll be in bed by 8:00.
And that's from March till December.
Yeah.
You can be there then, if you like, Jerry.
You know that one of our events that's well-liked is when we allow the dogs in the pool. Is that going to still happen?
Yes. Yep, that will continue.
Stuff like that doesn't have to change.
Yeah, I mean, it's a pretty well-liked event in Bettendorf, for sure.
And I'm sure the dogs will like the lazy river.
The filter system doesn't like the dogs, is the issue.
Okay, Chris, before it gets out of hand.
So Section 7 and 8 really deal with this issue of operations. I won't go through each and every item here again, as Decker said. If in the next two weeks you've got questions, you know, please let me know. This sets forth the general obligations and costs associated with the operation of an aquatic facility such as this. And then in Section 9, we get into the replacement and CapEx area, which is the city's responsibility. Before I get into that, let me just deal with the question of painting of the aquatic facilities, which we are dealing with in sort of a hybrid way. The parties have agreed to, I was frankly not aware that oftentimes, painting of a pool is seen as more of a capital expenditure. I, in my first draft, didn't realize that, but we were able to come to a compromise to where the city would buy the paint for any painting of the, not the definition of aquatic facilities, but the swimming amenities, the pool, the lazy river, those sorts of things. The city would buy the paint, and the Y, through their experience in painting pools, would provide the labor. So we're dealing with the painting of the swimming amenities in a little different way. It's really neither operation nor replacement, but that's how the agreement deals with it in Section 9F, and 9F primarily is where we deal with that.
And if you look at 9E...
9E, yeah.
In our current capital definition, this is our definition, if anything over $5,000 and anything that has an operational life of over two years, we classify that as capital ourselves. And so when we think of capital expenditures, we've labeled that that way. That's how we came to this, and I think we came to a good solution on the painting because it could have been all ours, and Brad offered that we would provide product, they would provide the labor to make it happen. So I think that was a great, great compromise to do that.
Yeah, I agree, and so just as there's an operation budget, there's a CapEx budget that will be reviewed annually. be reviewed annually in the, in the event that there's something that, it's not clear whether it's a repair or an operation or a capex replacement issue. There are these sort of general guidelines that we've got in section nine E. Additionally, I think one of the great things about having two parties that, that work well together and have leaders that work well together is that section 10 talks about an executive committee to deal with the potential for disagreement about whether something is a, an operation issue or a capex issue. But at the end of the day, the city is responsible for the replacement of, of the asset, which is a city-owned asset. Moving on to section 11, it's really primarily dealing with the financing of it. And some of these terms are in, in brackets and we're still working with bond counsel to make sure that, that this reads as we need it to. But this is standard agreement, or standard language when it comes to a nonprofit and a, and a governmental entity coming together on a project such as, as we have here. Moving down into really sections 13 through 19, we deal with the issue of risk allocation, indemnification and insurance. And I think really what it comes down to is the, the indemnity provision, which is the key sort of provision when it comes to which party is responsible for, which, who's, who's got the primary responsibility for a liability. It comes down to, this is a reciprocal indemnification provision based on which party is performing. And so to the extent the Y is performing under this agreement through their operation and maintenance of the facility, if the city is brought into a lawsuit because of that, then the Y would indemnify us for that, would defend and indemnify the city on that issue. And likewise, the city would indemnify and defend the Y for anything that arises out of the city's actions under this agreement. So it's a standard reciprocal indemnity provision, and I think appropriate in this type of, of, of agreement. We do have the clause that nothing in this agreement would be construed to waive any immunity that might be available to the city as a governmental entity. The, the standard insurance issues would apply. Both parties would need to ensure their, their position and their assets and, and ensure against any liabilities that might come up as a result of their actions. So it's a, a pretty, I think, fair and robust liability group of sections. And then really the, the last major issue before you get into the boilerplate is are the, the termination issues. As I mentioned at the outset, there are, this is a 20-year agreement. The, the, there are limited reasons that either party can terminate this agreement. You come to, we come together and we mutually agree to terminate it, or one party is in breach of the agreement and has not cured the agreement, or cured that breach, which would give a termination right to the other party. Again, this is a, a standard, a standard issue in, in contracts. There is no, though, to be clear, there is no termination for convenience clause, which you do oftentimes see where you can provide a particular notice and the, and then you can get out of the agreement without the other party being in breach. That is not the case here. This is a 20-year agreement. We did put in a section in 22E that in the event that there is a breach outside of what's allowed under this agreement, that the Y would be able to recoup their unamortized portion of the capital that they put into this deal. But that, again, is not an, an issue that, it's not an action that the city has the right to do under this agreement.
And we don't own the facility, so it only makes sense that they get something back.
Correct.
Scott, you got a question on that?
And the fear there was, and Brad expressed it and we, we agreed, that if by chance you got a rogue council that just said, eh, we don't agree with this anymore and we're just gonna take this back over. This protects them in a way over and above that we just don't get to do that. If we do do that, they get their amortized losses for that investment that they made.
And if they walk, we get the facility. So it's.
Correct.
It doesn't have to be reciprocal because we own the, the item.
That's right.
That they help pay for. So it, and I like the fairness. Scott, go ahead.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna counter that I don't think it's 100% fair because part of the, that, that there's not a, you get a rogue board at the YMCA and they go the opposite direction. Sure, we get the facility and there's some money and the sooner we get it, the more benefit we have, but the later we get it, we're taking into consideration our non-revenue losses. So we don't know how the facility, we don't have a pro forma on the facility. We don't know what it's gonna cost every year to do, you know? So the longer it goes, we could be taking a risk that they could walk away. Sure, we get the facility, but we don't know what we have and we would have to get it up and running right away that could be on the taxpayers' backs. So that's, that's one concern on 22E a little bit, not overly, because I do side with the mayor that we do get the facility, but there is still a concern that if we were to get it back, I don't think we would, don't think it'll happen. When you do these, you kind of prepare for the worst and hope for the best.
I, I think, I guess if I could just, just clarify, there, you know, if the Y just walked away, or if the city just said, you need to get out, that's a, that's a breach of contract and, and then under common law, you would, the non-breaching party would get, they, they would get damages for, to put them in the position had there not been a breach. This really, this 22E really is sort of beyond that. It's sort of, it's dealing with the, it, it's a form of breach, but you still would have the, the normal contract damages that you would have. This is just, just to clarify that there is no for convenience termination.
Okay.
So.
So my other question, you're an attorney, so I've, I've read this before, I don't know if it's true, that there was a breach of a contract, of a, a similar contract with a $1 per year lease, which is kind of what we're leasing. And then the courts came back and gave the dollar per year. So do we take a risk that that could happen if somebody breached? Because they basically said your only loss is the dollar per year that you were supposed to get on the lease. I mean, obviously.
I, I remember my contracts professor, he had an acronym, Piagapap, which doesn't, which isn't a great one because it's not a normal, but it's put in as good a position as prior to the breach. And so it, it's basically a $1 is, is not enough to put that non-breaching party into the position that they would have been had there not been a breach. That, I, I guess I would.
Other parts of damages, there are other stuff.
So I would question, I guess, the, the, the dollar award by that judge.
Okay, so.
Because there might be other elements of damages, right?
Right.
That's where you might get, you might get that for the lease, but then you're gonna get lost.
It was also a news story.
There's a lot of other things, yeah.
Just because I read it on the internet doesn't mean it was true.
Uh huh.
So my other question goes back and, and you jumped too quick before I could get it, is nine E, on the repair and replace, just because this is a contract and I get concerned when you use and or. It says that the cost of repair under $5,000 to be considered operational and the expected use life under two years. So for instance, like a chair that's in there would probably have an expected life over two years, but would be under 5,000. If you're saying and, does that mean that that chair would not be considered operational because it has to meet both of those? Should it not say or? Because.
That's a good, that's a good, I guess I, I know that Jason and I talked about this and we had a good meeting with, with Brad and Josh where we talked about this and I think my, we will take a look at that. I, I believe that the, I, I, it's a good, it's a good question. I think it might have been an or, but I, but I, I just don't recall.
Well, it may be an and in our, because we're using what we've got. Anything that would really be an operational cost, because a chair's not gonna be an, I mean, a, a.
Chair should be operational, should be capital.
It's not gonna be.
I mean, the $5,000 in the two years makes sense, but it should, I would think it would be or because otherwise.
This was, this is really intended, this was intended to give, to give some guidance to the parties in the event that there was a disagreement. So I, I don't know that, you know, this is, again, it's not like an obligation, this, this clause doesn't set forth an obligation. It, it sets forth an acknowledgement by the parties that it may be unclear. And I guess in that case, we would come together and we would work it through. We, we'll take a look at that, that issue of whether and or, or, or is, is more appropriate. But again, I think the main point is to, this was an acknowledgement that, that there could be ambiguity and that this is intended to help resolve that dispute, but we'll look at that issue.
And I think it's, it's a good way. I just think the and may make it more reason to sit back and say if it's an or, then you're basically, if it's under $5,000, it would be considered operational, because there's not too many things in that pool that probably have a useful life under two years, I would think, outside of like pool chemical and stuff like that. I mean, there's not gonna be many items there that are gonna be useful life under two years. Maybe a pool floaty.
We'll, we'll look at that.
Anything else before we move on? Did you feel like Counselor Curran, you had exhausted your comments on the agreement?
I, 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 I believe so. So, and I thought I'd also give, once we're done with that, talk about the other agreement as well.
Anything else on this agreement? Consent C, we'll go to B and talk about that other agreement here in just a minute. The divestiture of the building itself. All right, let's move to B and then we'll pass them one by one.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, so this is the agreement for the sale of the Life Fitness Center. As was mentioned before, the purchase price is the assessed value of $1,430,840. This is a very standard agreement for the purchase and sale of real estate. There are a couple of, of areas that I'd like to point out that are unique to this, to this agreement. One is that there, there is presently a condition to the closing that is contingent on the execution of the shared use agreement that we just talked about. That's in section three. And then the other unique aspect of this real estate purchase agreement is section six, the post-closing covenants of the buyer. And this is where, and maybe in particular, well, really all three of these are, are material, but the first one, six A, deals with the fitness center, that access will be provided by the Y for indoor tennis for a period of, the earlier of 24 months from the date of closing, or such time as an indoor facility, indoor tennis facility, offering, offering at least two regulation-sized tennis courts opens on the Iowa side of the Quad City metro area. So there's a commitment for 24 months of tennis at the, at the facility unless another option becomes available on the Iowa side. So at one point, 18 months was, was discussed, but it is 24 months now. We also have the, the promise that the city can use the facility for summer camps in the event of inclement weather, and then also that the facility can be used as an emergency center, as the parties may other, more specifically agree. So other than that, it's really a, a very standard purchase agreement. The closing would take place no later than December 15th.
Questions on the agreement for sale of real estate? Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Do we anticipate that using it for an emergency facility or using it for rain days for summer camp will be a cost involved or is that just a no-cost item that Y is providing as part of the process?
Currently, I think currently Brad's been generous, but I think if we abuse our power, I think he might say, we've, we've only used it once in my 32 years as an emergency shelter, where we opened it, but we never had anybody come to it, but we did open it once for that purpose. And I don't know how many times in the summer we use for summer camp, but it's probably a handful.
Weather-dependent.
At the most, yeah.
Yeah, and so.
Once a month could be, depends.
Currently Brad hasn't told us he's gonna charge us, but I think if we become pests, he might have a chat with, he might impose the operational agreement where we come together and have a chat. Would be my guess.
Well, if we have to use it a lot, that means we're getting more rain and probably the local farmers would be willing to contribute to that.
Okay. We'll put you on the fundraising committee.
Any other questions on the purchase agreement?
All right, let's take a look at consent item B, and I'd like to entertain a motion that that remain on consent agenda for tomorrow night.
We'll move.
Second. All those in favor? Yes, Jerry?
Your Honor, I move that we move it to item 18 on the regular agenda.
Okay. There's a motion in the middle of another motion, but we can certainly take that up. Can I just point out that both of these, all you're doing is setting a date for a public hearing.
All you're doing is setting a public hearing.
You're not taking any action.
I realize that, but these are significant actions and I think from a public perception standpoint, we don't want to have the perception that we're hiding them on the consent.
Is there a second? All right, motion dies for lack of a second. We'll move to the original motion, which on consent B was to take it up on consent tomorrow evening. We had a motion a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
That motion passes. We move to consent C. Jerry, do you want to make your motion on this one too?
Yes, please. I move that we move it to item 18 on the regular agenda.
Do I have a second? All right, that dies for lack of a second. We move to an, an opportunity that keeps this on for consent item tomorrow night that's at a public hearing. I'd like to entertain that motion.
We'll move.
Second. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that one also passes. We move to consent item D, and this is for Jason Schatt, our IT, and our IT manager, Monty Sangson. Thanks, Finance Director Schatt and IT Manager Sangson for being here. Mr. Martel, thank you for being here. Mrs. Kidwell, Mr. Plain, Mr. Curran, nice work. Appreciate your presentation. Now we move to Microsoft 365.
Thank you, Your Honor. Monty will do most of the talking as he is the IT expert in the room. I just kind of play one from time to time.
You say, how much does it cost? Let me go talk to counsel, come with me.
But we do have an exciting project to propose for you tonight. That kind of moves us in a, in a really positive direction, I think, from an IT standpoint, moves us in a, in a very modern direction and sets a foundation for us to implement a lot of those things that we have identified, not only in our work with Barry Dunn and the IT needs assessment, but just some things that Monty has identified in his time here already. And this is kind of the, the first domino to fall, if you will. So with that, I'll turn it over to Monty.
Oh, we got a slideshow. That's right.
But no talk of paint or anything like that on this one. There's a lot of information here. I have a printout that I'll hand all to you or hand you all at the end, but this is my way to show you in color and make sure you're paying attention while I'm talking, so you don't get it to the end. So Microsoft 365 is a suite of software. This is being targeted by us for really five strategic focused areas that, that we're focused on. I'm not gonna get into great depth of, of this information, but the five areas, cybersecurity, modern workplace, operational expense, total cost of IT. the five areas, cybersecurity, modern workplace, operational excellence, uh, total cost of IT and, uh, people and culture. And the Microsoft 365 suite and framework allows us to, uh, target all three of those, or I'm sorry, all five of those, which is, uh, making it, uh, quite a valuable project for us. So you can see a number of things in here. I'm just going to highlight a couple of them. So under, uh, cybersecurity, there's a number of things, uh, that are part of the security and compliance area that Microsoft 365 is going to allow us to, uh, capitalize on later down the line. Modern workplace, there's a lot of collaboration and teamwork tools that are common in the, uh, workplace today that we don't have yet. Microsoft Teams, SharePoint, OneDrive, there's a lot of them out there and we're not leveraging them yet. So there's a lot of those that will come along with this framework. Operational excellence is another, uh, key area. We really want to be able to streamline and automate some processes. So there's a lot of manual processes within the city. And so we want to leverage a lot of the tools that come with Microsoft 365 to automate that for, uh, improved efficiency as well as accuracy. And then the last one that I'll kind of comment on here, uh, because it is a, uh, cost item here, uh, the total cost of IT. So right now we have a whole bunch of disparate toolsets that we're doing, um, maintenance on regularly and we're paying licenses on. Um, a lot of those will go away, so we can consolidate it into one toolset under the Microsoft 365 umbrella. And there's some future costs that we'll be able to avoid. So the Barry Dunn survey that came back had a lot of things identified, uh, to do and a lot of those things come along with the functionality that's part of the 365 suite. So instead of having to purchase a whole bunch of different software for each line item that's, that's in the Barry Dunn report, we get a lot of it out of the box with 365. Most people are familiar with, uh, the Office 365 suite. Microsoft rebranded that a while back and no longer calls it Office 365. It's now Microsoft 365. And that's because what you see on the screen here are just the things that are user-facing, right? It's what you would see, uh, but there's easily three, four times as many things under the covers that the IT team needs, uh, in order to execute on a lot of our strategies. So while there are a lot of benefits for the end users, uh, there's a lot of things that they won't necessarily see if we do it right to improve our security and compliance, uh, aspects. I'm not going to, uh, read all of this. Uh, again, I'm going to hand it out to you. I'm just going to comment on a couple of these. So one in, uh, one in particular that I'll comment on is the first one on the list. The CGIS compliance is extremely important for the police department. It's what allows them, us to certify that we are in compliance and allows them to have access to the FBI's criminal justice, uh, data, um, a number of their tools, a lot of that kind of stuff. So one of the things that we're doing with Microsoft, Microsoft 365 is ensuring that we're going to stay compliant. We're in what Microsoft calls the government cloud, um, without, uh, going into a, a rabbit hole of, uh, variations on clouds. Uh, there's the commercial cloud that typical companies, uh, would leverage. So John Deere, for example, leverages the Microsoft commercial cloud. There's the, the other end of the spectrum is what the DOD, um, NSA, all of those, uh, three-letter government acronyms would, would access. That is the ultra-secure, uh, government cloud. What we're, uh, required to do for CGIS compliance is somewhere in the middle. And so the services that we get as part of this, uh, are certified for CGIS compliance. So we, we will have that out of the, out of the gate. And then there's a number of things down at the bottom. You'll see I have, uh, asterisks by them. They are things that we're looking at potentially doing down the line. Uh, they're valuable services. They're, um, things that we need to do, but they are an additional cost. So they're listed as, uh, an opportunity for us, but not something that we're going to be leveraging out of the gate. Modern workplace, uh, today we are running on Microsoft Exchange 2013. That is end of life in, uh, April. Uh, so we have to execute very quickly to get migrated off that onto something that's supported. And Microsoft Exchange Online is a part of that, uh, Microsoft 365 suite. And, uh, there's a lot of modern features and capabilities that come along with that. Some of it, uh, user functionality and user convenience. Uh, some of it is, uh, security related as well. And then I mentioned the, the collaboration, uh, enablement. So right now we don't have the capability to collaborate well within the city or with outside third parties. Anybody that's gotten, uh, PowerPoint emailed around and having that debate of which version of the PowerPoint do you have? And which version of the spreadsheet do you have, right? The idea with collaboration tools is that goes away. So instead of sharing a document, you share a link. When two people are editing a link, you're editing it at the same time, uh, the same document. So when I type a word into the document, if Jason's in his office or somebody's sitting in, uh, a beach in Florida, they're going to see that at that exact same time. So it is true point-in-time, uh, collaboration, uh, tools that come along with the suite. The internet site, uh, which I've nicknamed Kobe, uh, because I got tired of saying the whole title there, is another one of the things that was called out in Barry Dunn that, uh, that we will build on SharePoint. So there's no extra cost to it. Uh, it comes with the 365 suite. And the last one I'll comment here, uh, because it's, uh, it shows up in pretty much every one of these, uh, focus areas is a single sign-on. So the idea of single sign-on, uh, anybody that's gone out to a, a site where it says, hey, would you like to log on with your Facebook accounts or your LinkedIn account? So you don't have to have its dedicated user ID and password for that site, that's single sign-on. So right now, uh, every city employee has potentially a dozen or more user ID and passwords for all of our applications. Every one of those is a potential compromise point, a potential weak point. So single sign-on means that we take applications like the new financial system and we can then point it towards the Microsoft 365 credentials. So the users have one username and password that they have to know and remember, and that will allow them to get access to everything. It's a lot more secure. It's a lot more, um, user-friendly, uh, and it's also a lot easier for us to monitor for compromises and, and problems. Not going to comment a ton on this, but there's a lot of opportunities for operational improvement. Leveraging the things that just come out of the box with the Microsoft 365 suite. A couple of them that I'll, I'll comment on are the file sharing. There's a lot of demand, uh, to share documents with third parties. And right now we're emailing them in and outs. Um, sometimes we run into problems with them being too large. So, uh, for example, if, uh, the mayor is out of town and records a, a, a video and needs to get it to, to somebody on-site so that we can post it, it's too big to email. That's where these file sharing services come into play with a couple of clicks. It's uploaded.
Figure it out. It worked. Way to go Denise.
And the last thing down at the very bottom, so employee cell service. So right now, uh, anytime anybody needs to, to reset the username and password for one of those dozen PLOS accounts, uh, they have to call somebody from IT. We're leveraging password reset automation, uh, and toolset that again, comes with the, out of the box with Microsoft 365. Users can log on, answer security questions and, and a variety of mechanisms, just like any other tool that you've ever used. So we're, uh, we're excited about the opportunity to make it easier for the end users and also, uh, take a little bit of that, um, load off of the IT help desk, uh, for doing those kind of remedial things. Here's some of the future costs, uh, software basically that we're paying today, uh, that we're no longer going to have to. So this is going to be things that we can, uh, quite likely, so this isn't, uh, written in stone. But these are things that we expect over the next few years that we will be able to phase out. And one of the, the, the things that I, that I want to highlight here is what you see there is just the license cost. So it's just the cost for the software, just like that iceberg I'm showing over there on the, on the lower right. The cost of the software is just the part that sticks up above the, uh, above the water. What's not shown there is all of the behind-the-scenes costs for today's software, the servers that we have to maintain, the admin time that goes into patching it and updating it and upgrading it and all of that kind of stuff. All of that today is hidden. It's behind the scenes. You don't see it. All you see is the, the check that we write for the software licenses. That model changes when we move to Microsoft 365. The license is an all-in, um, cost. So there is still some support costs to be able to help the users. But it runs on cloud servers, so there's no cost for that. They patch it, they maintain it, they upgrade it. All of that happens lightning fast without admin effort at all. So the cost that you see for, uh, cloud services, uh, is a whole lot more accurate to the true costs. The total cost of IT where licensed software on-prem like we have today, uh, there's a lot of hidden costs that you just don't see. We did look at a lot of other options out there. So one of the big benefits of 365 is everything is together. On an earlier slide I had frictionless integration. So all of the pieces of Microsoft, uh, work together seamlessly. We could, if we wanted to continue, uh, down a, a, a different path, we could go out there and find different software for many of the things that we want to do. There's literally dozens of vendors for everything that we want to do. Some of the biggest names, uh, are on the slide here. But we did go out and look at, okay, what would it take if we wanted to do all of these things separately? And just the administration time alone, uh, to try and do that, uh, was astronomical. Not to mention the fact, the, one of the big benefits you get from Microsoft 365 is you have one interface. You have one set of user credentials. You have one set of policies to allow access or don't allow access. If you have a half a dozen tools, now your admin has to maintain that security posture in a half a dozen different applications and a half a dozen different architectures. And, um, the, the chance for misconfiguration, uh, is huge. And anytime you hear about a cloud hack, somebody hacked this company's cloud service or this was stolen out of the cloud because of a hack, every one of those is due to a misconfiguration. Everything comes down to how it's configured. It's not a flaw in the cloud. It's company ADC didn't configure the security policy right, and that's what allowed somebody to have access to it. That is a much bigger problem when you have a whole bunch of different clouds, a whole bunch of different applications you have to maintain. So having that suite together makes it a whole lot easier to maintain and therefore a lot more secure. So we, I have two slides here with some stuff from the Barry Dunn report. So these are things, uh, one is, uh, the first one here is things that are substantially addresses. So by doing Microsoft 365, uh, these are things that we, we know that will either be completely addressed with the 365 suite, uh, or quite likely will, uh, meet the need. So, uh, talk about the second one there, a document management system. That was on the Barry Dunn report to do. Now there are applications out there that do that, and that's all that they do, and they're very, very good at it. The problem with that is to implement that, it typically takes a team of two or three people to maintain that application alone. So what we think we can do is by leveraging SharePoint, which is outstanding at document management, and OneDrive and/or OneDrive, uh, we believe that we can probably meet the city's needs and all of the city's needs, to be clear, um, leveraging those tools. Instead of having to go out and buy another application that's going to be, you know, ballpark of a hundred thousand dollars a year, just for the documentation management software, um, we can believe that we can accomplish what the city needs, leveraging pieces that are built into Microsoft 365. And then the last one here is contributes key functionality. So the, notice there, that first one that I mentioned, single sign-on. So, uh, that will allow us to leverage the Microsoft accounts, what we log on to our desktops with, to give us access to the financial system where today it's a completely separate credential store. Different user ID, different password that the users have to maintain. They have to change. Unfortunately, they write it down. Um, the potential for compromises is quite a bit larger. So, uh, kind of the breakdown of the costs. Uh, so we took a look at every user, uh, within the city that has a, an account. The users typically fall into two buckets. Uh, one are knowledge workers, so need lots of, um, lots of tools on their desktop, lots of interacting with spreadsheets, lots of macros, PowerPoints, things like that. And then there's another group that are frontline workers. Uh, those are the folks that, um, don't have a, a dedicated computer of their own and their, um, needs are drastically different. They don't need a full-blown Microsoft Office suite. They don't need all of the bells and whistles. They need email, they need calendar, they need an account, that kind of stuff. And so there's two different licenses that we're going to buy. Notice there's a pretty significant price difference between the two. Thirty dollars a month is the, um, the discounted rate, um, for the knowledge worker license. Comes out to $360, uh, per person, uh, per year. And then the frontline, uh, workers is $7 a month. Add all that up, comes out to roughly seventy thousand, seventy thousand dollars a year. Back on that previous slide, if you look at the, the licenses that we're not going to have to buy on that previous slide, that also totals roughly $70,000 a year. So this is not really much of a cost up. The difference is with the other list, it was six, seven different things for much smaller amounts and lots of hidden costs. This is, looks larger because it's a one-time hit, uh, but there's a lot less hidden costs. A lot of it is, um, is built into that software, um, license charge.
Questions for Monty? Anybody? Scott Webster?
I, I only have one. I've worked for a company who had this. And, uh, I mean, they could have had a bad technology department, but when it went bad, it went really bad, which made nobody could work because the whole system, it was all integrated. So it seemed like if you lost part of it, you lost all of it. Is that a concern at all? I mean, I don't, I don't know why that would happen, but essentially you just went home because there was, work was done for the day.
Yep.
Live on the computer, you work on the computer, and when it was down, it was down.
That, um, that is always a risk. Um, with the cloud that we're in, the GCC cloud, the government cloud, the, they're required to provide five nines of availability, so 99.999% availability. And I probably should have looked this up, but that's about 15 minutes of downtime a year. Because it is built into the cloud, it runs in multiple data centers. So when you go to connect to Exchange, you may connect to one of Microsoft data centers on the East Coast. Or if there's a problem, you automatically connect to one of the data centers on the West Coast. And the data is replicated, uh, across the middle. So the availability of the, of that data is significantly higher than where it is today, running on one server with internal hard drives sitting in a closet downstairs. So the risk is there, um, but it's a lower risk than, than we have exposure to today.
So who's responsible on breaches at that point in time of data? Is all the data on a government-type cloud? Who's responsible for breaches to that security moving forward? Because obviously if there's a breach and you're, you're talking clouds now, they get breached all the time. Who's, are we still responsible for that?
Yes. So the way that all cloud services work is what's called a shared, shared responsibility model. And Microsoft, Google, Amazon, they all work the exact same way. So they, they secure the platform itself. So, um, think of it as they secure the operating system. We are responsible for the application that's running on it. I'm oversimplifying it, uh, to try and, um, to clarify. When there is a breach, um, they will know, Microsoft will know if their, uh, underlying cloud was breached. If it was, um, pretty much every government entity is going to be in the same boat because they'll have access to all of that data, uh, every entity's data. So they're, they're monitoring their piece of it. We are going to monitor our piece of it. If there is a breach, it is, uh, again, that shared responsibility model where, uh, we have a contact that we can reach out. They will help us identify the source of the breach, um, but ultimately it's our data. We're responsible for securing our data on the platform through the configurations and, and things of that sort. So we're responsible for the data's security the same way that we are today.
Other questions?
Just a question, Your Honor. Monty, your numbers or Jason reflect 195 employees on 140 frontline or vice versa? We don't have 335 full-time employees. We don't have three hundred and thirty-five full-time employees, but I'm assuming you're taking part-time people into consideration.
Three hundred and thirty-five emails and sign-ons. So, that would include part-time employees, some seasonal employees that come and go.
Commission members, library board members, other boards, anybody who's got. So, all of those people are included in our cadre.
Correct.
Thank you.
And I would just say to the cost, and I think Monty did a good job. This is a new way to pay for a service, a different way for us. But we we really believe it will eliminate the need for not only things that we're doing today, but things that Barry Dunn called out that we should be doing in the future will be taken care of by this move to three sixty-five. Just for your maybe comfort. In the current budget, we have fifty thousand dollars to replace the Exchange server that goes end of life in April. We have another thirty-two upgrade Microsoft Office from the twenty thirteen edition that we're on today. So, a total of eighty thousand dollars. So, those are costs that we will not have to take on because this move to three sixty-five eliminates the need for both of those. So, this first year is more than paid for just in that move there. And then, as you know, we have a line item in the technology fund to kind of build up spending towards those initiatives in the Barry Dunn plan. A lot of those things are taken care of here. So, the ongoing cost, I believe, is not only already in the budget, but I think there's some significant savings, some unseen savings that will will realize through this process as well. So, should be a very positive maneuver for the city as a whole.
We've talked about upgrading that technology, modernizing what you're doing. This is certainly a great step in that direction. We also talked about the need to protect the data and our comfort level with the cloud must be changing because we wanted it onsite protected. Now, we're okay. Because we've learned, or it's gotten better. I'm not the guy to ask. I'm just, we're okay?
Absolutely. I think we were kind of, we were evolving in that direction even prior to Monte coming out.
Yes, we were talking about it.
And the world has certainly evolved there faster than we have. And I think we're more comfortable. We were getting more comfortable with the cloud. Monty comes from a lot of experience in other organizations using the cloud. So, his comfort level gives me a lot of comfort. So, I think, yeah, we, that's, that is the direction that we, the world is going, and and we are going to go right along with it.
Other questions or thoughts? Yeah, Jerry.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, this will protect us from these ransom people?
This is one component of protection. When you talk about cybersecurity and protection from all of the bad actors, you have to take a layered approach. And this is going to enable multiple layers, and it's implementing multiple layers. So, it greatly improves our cybersecurity stance just by doing it. But it will enable us to do other things that are going to continue us down that path. It is a big step in the right direction as far as improving our cybersecurity.
Thank you.
Other questions? This is listed on consent as item D as in dog. I'd like to entertain a motion that it remain the same, or if somebody wants to move it off, they may do so. To keep it on? Okay, Jared, we got a second. Thank you, Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that'll remain on our consent agenda as item D tomorrow night. Counsel, please take a look at the rest of the consent agenda. If there's any questions or thoughts on any of those items that are on consent or if anybody wishes to remove anything from consent onto the normal agenda for whatever purpose. Now's the time. Any questions? Yes, Frank?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to ask, is this a chief said, item number M? Could you fill us in on that a little bit? Is that a replacement? And where is it going to go? And how long does it take to get it?
So, yes, it's a replacement for engine three that's currently out at station four. That engine was built in two thousand nine, has approximately a hundred and six thousand miles on it, and the maintenance cost for that is is huge. So, we tend to move our engines around with mileage. So, if if one company is busier than another, we'll put a low-mileage engine out at that station. So, the build time is approximately eighteen months with this new program. It could be up to twenty-four months with a normal custom build. But we're looking forward to getting it. The reason why we moved this, and Jason can talk probably more on finances, is they got a seven percent increase coming November first, which is a guaranteed increase. Our average increase is about six point eight percent per year. And if we run this out to twenty twenty-four, you're going to see a significant cost for it, so.
Right, this particular vehicle is programmed within our vehicle replacement schedule to be replaced in twenty-three, twenty-four. We're bringing it to you today. We won't pay for it before then, we won't receive it before then. But in order to get to lock in the pricing that they were offered today, we have to get your approval to commit to the purchase. But again, you won't be spending any of the, any unbudgeted money until twenty-three, twenty-four, when it actually is in the budget. Thank you.
Enterprise doesn't rent fire trucks?
They would, but we didn't put that in the program.
Other consent item questions? All right, seeing that, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Take a look at your operational items. Are there any operational items any council member wishes to discuss at this time? Lots ordinances, but a lot of those are on second or third readings.
Your Honor, just to point out that last, yesterday afternoon, we got correspondence from, a number of us did, from the National Weather Service about the prediction of the storms that hit last night. Brian and his team prepositioned six to eight personnel. And we had them in place. I think both chiefs on fire and police side had everybody ready to go. We did have some damage, but nothing extremely difficult. Guys that were called out about two o'clock in the morning, cut down some trees and cleared some streets on portions of the city. But I would tell you that the the alert system that we're with in Alert Iowa has a feature that alerts our folks to that. Brian and his team reacted to that. Keith and Troy and Steve, same thing. So, we had people positioned just in case there were issues or some minor issues. But we're feeling good about our our preparation, and we're starting to talk now more about, since we haven't had use of incident command in a couple of years. We'll do some additional training to get us back in the ballpark, utilizing our EMA resources and incident command that you'll likely get invited to. But I just wanted to say thanks to Brian, his team, for getting ready last night. That's stuff that you don't necessarily know about or hear about, but they were ready to go. And I'm not even sure it costs us any pizza. Normally, it does, but everything went pretty well for what happened. And it was a pretty good storm, and we did have sixty mile an hour winds, which activated the sirens for the protocol. Everything seemed to work like our current protocols require.
Nice job, Brian. Storm debris need to be corded?
No, there was just actually a very, very minor.
But if you're getting questions like I am from residents, can I just throw out the storm debris so they pick it up? But it still needs to be placed and and wrapped in twine the right way.
That is correct. If they would just call Public Works at three four 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 zero eight eight, they can coordinate with our staff. Obviously, we're on a regular pickup cycle, but we would send a special trip out there to pick up any debris that they would have from the storm that they brought to the curb.
Any other operational items? Thank you, gentlemen, and all those who got ready last night. I'm sure there are some ladies included in that. You just happen to be gentlemen there that were ready to rock and roll. I don't have, other than a drink of water, I have nothing to add to the meeting. How about anybody from council? All right, may I please entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We stand adjourned. Good work, people. Seven o'clock tomorrow.